Well, good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Worcester City Council held this Monday, or Monday, Tuesday, June 21st, 2022. First day of summer and the temperature certainly feels like this. We are in council chambers and live streamed on YouTube. It is after 7:30 PM. We're starting a little late because we had a wonderful presentation by Chief Barry Saley about the proposed renovations of Fire Station Number One. And just so everyone knows, that might be watching or listening, or however they get their information, because of council's summer hiatus established by the city's charter, as voted by the residents, believe it or not, our next regularly scheduled council meeting will be Tuesday, September 6th, 2022, the day after Labor Day. So that doesn't mean we might not have an emergency meeting, but right now, the regular meeting won't be in until September 6th. Mr. Paulo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Cavan.
President.
Ms. Knappich.
Present.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Reynolds.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Silvestri.
Here.
And Ms. Warden.
Here.
Well, it's nice to see everyone. We do have a quorum. The agenda will remain as presented. And at this time, I would ask you to join the city council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item now would be the approval of minutes of June 6th, 2022. So I'd entertain a motion.
So moved for approval.
Motion by Mr. Silvestri to approve those minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. And the minutes of June 6th, 2022 have been approved. Welcome, Mr. Mayor. It was an interesting tour of the fire station and, like I said, a wonderful presentation about the proposed renovations.
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke and council members for taking some extra time and doing an actual in-person tour of the facility. I think probably you all knew it is an older building for us, but it is still in good shape physically. It's just being tested by time and expansion of the fire service and you can see some of the needs that are truly present there. So I hope we can find the ways to piece the whole financial picture together. We're sure digging every place we can to see if we can come up with any outside funded help of the situation. But it is really a need for our city. So again, thank you for preparing and coming over with the folks and with the information that Chief Saley has presented to you. If you have any questions at all, feel free to contact him directly. He's the best source, but our administrative team will field any questions also if you need to. Really, I don't have to tell you this, but the biggest thing that's happened to our community since the last time we met was that thing on Monday night a week ago called that big day, de racho, I think is what.
De racho, yeah.
There you go. The big storm or the wind that came through our community. It definitely had a lot of damage that was taken over a week to clean up and get power restored. But all said, it could have been a lot worse for our community. We didn't have any injuries or deaths, to my knowledge, from the storm. We had some inconveniences. Truly, I think most of those are about done. Everybody inside the city should have been in power as of this time last night. So I think everybody is, power is restored in Worcester. To the south and maybe slightly west of Worcester, the damage is more considerable. So we should feel sad for those folks that have stronger damage than what we do, but we are pleased that we don't have any more than that. The lines have been fixed. I know you saw downlines across the city. We had some traffic signals were out for some time. The AEP tried to get to them as quickly as possible and they had to prioritize how they handled it, but I think all lines are back up and all traffic is back to a normal situation. The debris cleanup is continuing and probably will for a while, but we are gaining on it. It was mainly straight line winds, 90 mile per hour or thereabouts that hit our city and there was no indication of any type of rotation. So it was not a tornado, to our knowledge, that came through this, our particular city now may have had some of those impacts to the south and west. Wanted to say thank you to Chief Saley for leading the conversation tonight. I think he did a really nice job of pulling that information together and having the team there and you got to see quite a few of them. They have a meeting going on this evening and, but it was nice to have everybody sort of in the building and they saw you as council people there checking things out and knowing what was on our agendas for the future and that's a good thing. And you got to see them as a group together and that's sort of a rarity because usually you see them in three different shifts or pieces. So that was a nice occurrence. I do want to highlight, I know you've heard it from us before and from Chief Saley tonight, but this EMS Stars that our team was awarded back in, for January of 2019, where they saved a 14-year-old child that was having a cardiac event and probably wouldn't have made it without the true efforts of all working together. And I know Chief Saley explained all the teams that did come together to make that happen, but specifically Christopher Hawkins, Mike Maug, Kristen Brockway, Don Smith and Scott, oh, our Assistant Chief, I'm sorry.
Kuiper.
Kuiper, thank you.
Anything.
Apologize, I went brain dead there for a second. All sort of played a part in making that happen in there to be congratulated. The situation that I'm hearing about from Mr. Reynolds and others are the pool situations. I know we're into some hot weather right now and have, the pools, we've been having difficulty since the big storm came through with the electric. So we ran into difficulties, thankfully not with Freelander Pool. So Freelander, I think, has been up and open full through the whole time. The spray ground down at Knights Field, we ran into some pump issues on that and electric relay seems to be the problem. It has been fixed as of yesterday and so we are hopeful that it is continuing to operate. We've got fingers crossed because with those kind of components, you never know what's going to show up until it shows up. So Knights Field should be fully open and to the public and staff. Christmas run has been more of the challenge. It's not in any of the repairs that we did over the winter. It's been more in the motors. And so, and we're not sure exactly where the problem is coming from. We did lose electricity, so AEP had to restore the line coming in. It may be a transformer on that line that is causing us some issues, or it might be the line itself. So the electric feed is working at the moment, but the motors are, we're still investigating. It may be in one of the motors itself. We may have dropped a leg. It's a three-phase motor and we may have dropped a leg in one of those and that's why it's acting erratic. But until we can get all the pieces, parts in place, we're still investigating. But the last report I had is late this afternoon is everything is still running and we are planning on opening back to a normal situation as soon as possible. And lastly, the Fourth of July Independence Day celebration is coming up in about a week or so's time. Thanks to the Worcester Exchange Club and Foundation for helping to raise the funds again this year. Thank you, President Biden-Dyke and that group that you are a part of. And I'll tell you, we couldn't do it without the efforts of that group. And specifically, I have to point out Gilning, who has really been a champion of our fireworks forever. And so a huge thanks go to them for putting on the reverse raffle where they raised a lot of the funding that goes into our fireworks and make it happen. Along with the Exchange Club, the Rotary Club has been donating in and then the City of Worcester does a lot of the in-kind donations. Our police, our fire, our maintenance, our engineering team, all play parts in putting on the fireworks there. So with that, I wish all of you a good meeting. It will be our last regular meeting until September, as President Biden-Dyke says, unless we have to call a special meeting. And we, in some ways, we hope we get to call a special meeting because that means a few of the pieces that we're still working with are starting to fall into place. But yet to be seen and we'll let you know if we have to. So I'll turn it back over to you, President Biden-Dyke.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm wondering, because you brought it up, I know some of the traffic lights were out and I'm wondering if you could, since the daily record isn't here, I'm wondering if something can go into our water bills to remind people when the traffic lights are out, it's a four-way stop. I can't tell you how many people I saw blowing through traffic lights without even thinking about stopping.
Sure, right.
So maybe some re-education from some of those whose driver's education they don't remember because they don't remember or they just weren't paying attention when they had that part.
Sure.
Just something, it just appalled me, what I saw.
Sure, we'll get that in one of our bill.
Yeah. Hopefully, we won't have another event like that.
Yeah.
Just in case, if it causes one person to stop. And I don't think we have any petitions tonight and certainly no one signed up to speak from the public about agenda items. We did have a safety committee meeting. Do you want to give a brief synopsis of it?
Sure.
Although we touched on it, but you chaired it.
All right.
So I turn the floor over to you, Mr. Cavan.
Thank you. We had a splendid presentation from Chief Saley. We toured Station One here on North Market Street. A lot of things were pointed out. As he had said, the bones of the building are great, but it is an aging facility. There is a lot of upgrading that does need to be done. It was pretty obvious, but we will look over the copy of the PowerPoint that he passed out and we will further educate ourselves. I would encourage all council members, if you have any questions, please contact Chief Saley. Thank you.
Thank you. And I should say too, that Fire Station Number One is 61 years old and once again, it is reflective of how well this city maintains not only its equipment, but the physical buildings. We've gotten 61 years of use and will probably extend it another 60 years as, with the renovations and probably tweaking as we go down the road. So I certainly appreciate the efforts of everyone that works for this city. Okay, no public hearings, no unfinished business, so we've got five items of the agenda before we can start our summer vacation from council chambers. And the first item will be presented by Mr. Silvestri. It's budgeted, it's Resolution Number 2022-23. And Mr. Paulo, would you please read the title?
Resolution Number 2022-23. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise for bids and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the rehabilitation of sanitary sewer lines and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Silvestri, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. As part of our ongoing maintenance protocols for sanitary sewer lines, what the department does is identifies areas throughout the city that need constant work. Sometimes there are sections of pipe that break off and cause blockages in the sanitary sewer system. And so we try to identify those and on a regular basis, we go through our city and we clean out those particular areas and then we re-line those pipes to repair those old sewer lines to get more useful life out of them. So this is, like I said, it's a regular thing, but it does require council approval. There's an estimate here that it would cost $150,000 this year. And we get a couple of things for this. It reduces our maintenance cost and then also it limits the infiltration of sanitary sewage into the groundwater. So we want to try to do that for those reasons inherent to those two things. So we all want to hang on to our maintenance dollars and we know it's not good for the environment to have that kind of water leaching into the ground. So also, we, you know, this helps to reduce the risk of backups. So, and that's both in the mains and in the lines and then also that could affect the residents as well. So if there are any specific questions, Roger is in the audience tonight and I know I do not have to request suspension of the rules, so with that, I move for adoption, Mr. President.
All right. Motion to adopt by Mr. Silvestri. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any questions? Roger's here to answer them. I guess I'll ask, is this the type of what we've done in the past? Is this where they run a thing, like a plastic in and then they run like steam to?
Correct.
Solidify it?
Correct.
Okay. I've learned a few things on my time in council, I guess.
It's less expensive than to dig it up.
Sure.
To replace it.
Makes sense.
And we do it, we try to do it every year.
Yeah, I know this is basically an annual thing to identify sections and get some additional useful life out of them. Very clever idea.
When we do it, Roger, how long does that particular process last typically?
Oh, decades.
Okay.
What, marvelous.
Yeah.
Money well spent.
It doesn't state any specific locations in here. Are there neighborhoods or parts of town that are going to be more of a focus for this?
Yeah, Cohen, Miller, Wellesley, Eastern, and there's a section between Keene and Itisou School.
Thank you.
That has a lot of I and I, so those are the main areas.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Cavan.
Yes.
Resolution Number 2022-23 passes. Resolution Number 2022-24 will be presented by Ms. Knappich. Likewise, it is a budgeted item. Before I get to you, Ms. Knappich, Mr. Paulo, would you please read the title of that resolution?
Resolution Number 2022-24. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the construction of a city hall parking expansion and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Knappich, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. We had talked earlier about the meeting we had about the Station One, Fire Station One expansion. And in order to make that expansion a reality, it's going to take up spaces from the city hall parking lot. So now they are looking, or the city is looking to replace those parking spots that were lost to the expansion of Fire Station One and add an additional spot as well. So instead of having, what, $16, there will be 17 parking spots available for city hall and that will, of course, accommodate any expansion for Fire Station Number One. And Roger, I wanted to ask, this will be on the west side of the building, right?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. So it's adding on to the parking lot that's already there?
Well, there's a handicap spots there now.
Okay.
So it'll start there and go to the west.
Okay, great. So it's already been budgeted. It's necessary if we're going to do the expansion for Fire Station Number One. It's not required to suspend the rules, so I would move for adoption.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappich, is there a second?
Would second that.
Second by Mr. Cavan. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just, I'm assuming we're going to be able to, are we going to have any issues with ADA side grade with that? I mean, it's fairly steep.
No, it's not going to be, it's not going to be handicap parking. The handicap will be the two.
Oh, okay, just going to stay there. And I'm assuming we're going to pave it then too?
Correct.
Okay, so it's on the north side, not the west side. Correct myself.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, north side.
Yeah.
Going west.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Silvestri.
Yeah, one quick question. We're not obligated, if it's for city hall or the fire station, we're not obligated to make every 10th spot green space, are we?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought that was the case, but I noticed in the renderings for the fire station that was not the case. I didn't know if that had changed.
Unless we ask for variance.
Yeah, in the renderings, just so you're aware, it's not, not like that.
I don't think we'll be doing that.
I thought maybe I missed something, but yeah, last I knew every 10th spot had to be.
Yeah, and that, and we've already made provisions for that in these 17 spaces.
Correct, yeah, we're planting trees and there's one island.
Excellent, thank you.
And there's nothing further. Mr. Paulo, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
And Knappich?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2022-24 has passed. Brings us to Resolution Number 2022-25. It'll be presented by Ms. Warden. It is slated for three readings, but before I get to you, Ms. Warden, I will ask once again, Mr. Paulo, would you please read the title?
Resolution Number 2022-25. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the sponsorship of a funding application and providing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So as we all know, there's been an increase in commercial development in the northeast part of our town and with these facilities, obviously comes an increase in traffic, especially truck traffic. This resolution authorizes the Director of Administration to enter into a cooperative agreement with ODOT to apply for funding through the State Safety Board to construct a roundabout at the intersection of 585 and Guyers Chapel Roads. Should this application be accepted, ODOT is committing to fund 70% of the construction costs for the project, which would take place, not until 2026. The total estimated costs for this project are $1,881,000, with ODOT covering a little over 1.3 million of that. The Ohio Transportation Improvement District funding 20, or I'm sorry, $250,000, Ohio Jobs and Commerce committing to another $250,000 and the city then being responsible for the remaining $45,000. So when it's all spelled out like this, it seems like an opportunity that we probably shouldn't have. And because applications for this money are due to the Safety Council by late August and council will be hopefully enjoying its summer recess, I'd like to move to place this resolution on third and final this evening.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
All right, Resolution Number 2022-25 passes and we'll keep our fingers crossed. That brings us to Resolution Number 2022-26. It's again, Ms. Warden's resolution and it is also a three reading, slated for three readings, but I will ask Mr. Paulo to please read the title.
Resolution Number 2022-26. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract with CesO Inc. for professional design services related to the Oak Hill-Miltown Roundabout, appropriating the necessary funds and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours again.
Thank you, I'll speak up this time. So this is a request to appropriate funds and enter into professional contract with CESO Inc. to design the Oak Hill-Miltown Road Roundabout. The firm would also be responsible for designing the adjacent road improvements to Oak Hill that include approximately 2,000 feet of roadway south of the intersection and also approximately 1,000 feet of roadway to the east of the intersection along Miltown Road. All construction, engineering, and inspection will be performed in-house by our city's wonderful engineering staff and the estimated costs for this project are $159,800, which will be paid out of the capital fund. Just a reminder that this project is part of the TIF expansion of utilities and road improvements to that district. The TIF, or Tax Incremental Financing District, was approved by this council on February 22nd earlier this year. Authorizing the contract tonight will allow the project to remain on schedule for construction this year, so, or I'm sorry, in 2024, so therefore, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and place this on third and final reading.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Mr. Paulo, would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2022-26 passes and the last item for business is ordinance number It'll be presented by Mr. Reynolds. It is slated for three readings. Before I get to you, Mr. Reynolds, for last time, I turn to you, Mr. Paulo, and kindly ask you to please read the title.
Ordinance Number 2022-14. An ordinance amending Chapter 351 Parking Generally, Chapter 355 Off-Street Parking Facilities, and repealing Chapter 357 Parking Violations Bureau of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio by establishing a Civil Parking Violations Bureau under the authority of Ohio Revised Code Section 4521 Decriminalizing Most Parking Violations.
And I'm just surmising, without having a discussion, I think this will probably make Chief Fisher a happy individual, at least some parts of it. Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Any further discussion?
Just a question for Mr. Kobelarsik. The, the road improvements are gonna be, will be making the Miltown and Oak Hill typical city streets?
Yeah.
Yeah, curb, okay.
Mr. Kobel, the, is this the same design or engineering firm that did our other roundabouts, or a different one?
It's the one, they did the roundabout up for Myers and Menards.
Okay.
The one that did the other for Oak Hill and Holman, they were asked also for a price.
Okay. You were, you're happy with this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
Resolution number 2022, day 26 passes, and the last item for business is ordinance number 2022 dash 14. It'll be presented by Mr. Reynolds. It is slated for three readings. Before I get to you, Mr. Reynolds, for last time, I turn to you, Mr. Apollo, and kindly ask you to please read the title.
Ordinance number 2022 dash 14, an ordinance amending Chapter 351 Parking Generally, Chapter 355 Off-Street Parking Facilities, and repealing Chapter 357 Parking Violations Bureau of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio, by establishing a Civil Parking Violations Bureau under the authority of Ohio Revised Code Section 4521, Decriminalizing Most Parking Violations.
And I'm just surmising, without having a discussion, I think this will probably make Chief Fisher a happy individual, at least some parts of it, but Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours, or Mr. Reynolds?
No, actually, Mr. Reynolds.
The floor is yours.
I studied and studied on this one. I thought I was gonna lose my chance.
Well, I appreciate you doing your homework.
Well, thank you. As the title to this indicates, currently, the, a parking ticket is part of our criminal section of ordinances and subject to all the things that go along with that by Constitution. Ohio Advice Code gives us the option of making it an administrative matter and decriminalizing it, and, which has a number of advantages, as indicated in, in the title of the article. A lot of cities, and I understand the majority of cities, have taken advantage of that opportunity to decriminalize this, and as part of that, it calls for us to establish a parking violations bureau that would handle these administratively. There would still be an opportunity, like any type of administrative function of the government, there's still an opportunity to take it to judicial review in the rare cases when that would happen, and I'm sure there would, there, even though it's a $25 fine, I think, except unless it's a handicap space, there would certainly be instances, I'm sure, where somebody would fight that $25. But nonetheless, there should be great savings to the city to do this, and to Chief Fisher and his staff, some great time savings as well. And I guess I don't want to go any further into the weeds on that. To some extent, we have Mr. Scavelli and Mr. Gibbons prepared to do that, because this came from them, and as I understand, Mr. Gibbons particularly got some experience with this and from Solon, I think.
Stone, I believe.
Stone, I'm sorry. So.
And I, I should recognize, Mr. Gibbons is six months past his cardiac event, so very good. Let's have a few more six months, and then more after that.
As I, as I like to tell people, I am a proud member of the LOBT community that is living on borrowed time. This incident, this issue of the parking tickets came to our attention because the police department asked us to review reordering the physical tickets they were using, and sometimes when you ask a lawyer what time it is, he'll tell you how to build a watch. And in looking into this, I was actually surprised to find out that our parking tickets were still criminal. I mean, most cities in Ohio have decriminalized them for, basically because it's administratively simpler, and actually, from the standpoint of someone who gets a ticket, if they want to fight it, they've got to go to court, and if they lose, they have to pay the court costs, which is well over $100. And so for a, you know, $25 ticket, potentially, if you fight it and lose, you know, they have to pay $100, that really, that puts the, your ability to challenge that ticket, it's really not even, it, it, it puts it out of your price range. Who's going to risk $100 extra to fight a $25 fine? Whereas, under the parking violations, under the civil system, there would be no fee to, for someone, if they wanted to contest the ticket, the hearings would be held by Attorney Scavelli or myself, and only if they disagreed with our decision would it then go to, to the municipal court. So we went through and basically, you know, went through, reviewed this. Also, Lynn found that under the snowban section, there were about half a dozen streets that were added to the snowban section, what, 30 years ago?
1996.
Okay, so 25, over 25 years ago, that were never included in the parking, so she's also updated that. So we went through and made some other, just minor changes for housekeeping, but again, it, it takes it out of the, the criminal realm, makes it much administrative simpler, and as I said, most cities in Ohio, some have been doing this for decades, have been changing these over.
Well, makes sense to me, and, and just to clarify, it makes it a civil matter and not a criminal matter.
Correct, and so that even if the person goes to common police court, whatever the outcome is, it's, 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 it's a, it's a civil fine, it's a civil matter, nothing goes on their BMV record. Any other questions from the council?
Actually, I do have a couple of questions. In, in this, it says, "The chief of police shall establish the bond of cash deposit to secure the release of an impounded vehicle." Is there any reason why the police, the chief of police has to do that, and why the Bureau can't do that, why someone from administration can't, can't do that?
I think there's a good chance. I'll let the chief answer that, but my guess is that a lot of times, these things are happening when we're not even available, probably.
Okay, so anytime you would tow someone and impound them, then you would set, set the, the.
Normally, the vehicles towed or impounded, it's actually the, the towing company that normally sets that fee of, of whatever that is for their, the fee to tow them, whatever their daily storage rate is.
Okay, that, that's what I was, was familiar with, but I didn't know if this was a different process. I just thought it was interesting that you get to do this, you get to set that. I, I'm, I'm figuring that you're going to relinquish that to the towing and impounding company. I thought so. Okay, there was just a couple other things that I had. One.
I would, I would point out that the impoundment only applies to people who have not paid their parking tickets, and that there's a default judgment, so it's not, it's not that a car getting a ticket would be towed.
Right, absolutely, I understand that. And then, the only other thing that I had was, there is, on page nine, there's a typo, Winter Street has three Es.
Three Es?
Three Es.
Oh.
It says Street Ee. Winter Street Ee.
Oh, gotcha.
No big deal.
My finger stuttered.
It's way better typing than I do, so.
Mr. Gibbons, and I guess this Chief Fisher as well, just to make it clear here, there's no intent to change enforcement of, of traffic at all. This has nothing to do with parking enforcement, or how tickets will be issued. It's all about what happens after the ticket is issued, and the procedure that's followed from there.
Correct, from the police department's standpoint, no change. And you see how all this started, just a question, we're gonna reorder parking ticket books. So, no change on our end, just kind of changes after the, the site is issued.
Sure. Jim?
So I have something that might actually change that response, that I, that I noticed. This is, this regards, is with regard to a resident that has been calling, and Matt, we spoke about this last week, and I also had assistance from Captain Ndoma, but there's a vehicle that has been parking along Spink Street, and not to get mired into the, the details of it, because I think it's been resolved, at least temporarily, but there seems to be a little bit of confusion in the language about the definition of a commercial vehicle. So after speaking with Mr. Scavelli this afternoon, I would like to propose an amendment to this ordinance, basically to add into Section 351.16, a reference to Section 341.01, which unfortunately, we don't have in front of us this evening, but Mr. Scavelli, perhaps you could enlighten the, the rest of council as to what the, the change would be?
Sure. So when Ms. Warden asked me today about how it could, she could effectuate the change she's looking for, I think it could be as simple as adding in a reference to the commercial vehicle definition that's in, I think, 341, I can't remember.
Point 01C.
Point 01C, and I think that would be more than sufficient to address the concerns that she's looking at within the commercial vehicle prohibition. And since we're, we're working on this ordinance sort of as a whole, or the entire section sort of as a whole, we could make that change, I believe, or we could do it as a separate piece of legislation. Yes?
While we're on the subject, I don't know if you maybe received a call from the same citizen, the same resident up in my ward, somebody was talking about the same thing, a commercial vehicle being on street.
Mr. Schwarzkopf?
Yes.
Yes.
Overnight.
I have, I have talked with Mr. Schwarzkopf as well. Part of the, the things that he brought to my attention also included commercial vehicles, and sort of led to a reevaluation of the one section that we, we've also changed in here that has to do with commercial and then, and/or recreational vehicle parking is on resident, parking on residential streets. So I believe that the changes.
Which section was that?
That section is.
351.21.
Point 21, thank you.
Thank you. This had been a rather controversial piece of legislation back when it was first added. The changes to it, I think from Mummel, what it does do is it takes out the commercial vehicle part of that section, and just restricts it to recreational vehicles, and adds in that they can park in front of their own residence for 24 hours for loading and unloading only, which I think resolves.
Oh, I did see, you added "for the purpose of," I did see that, okay.
Which I believe resolves the problem of enforcement that the old version had. I, I went back and I looked at it, and due to just some complaints, and I thought to myself, well, you know, this is my own fault because I drafted it, but it's, it's gonna have some enforcement problems, and I think this fixes those things, and so I would ask City Council to consider that when they pass it, if they do.
I appreciate that amendment, because I've gotten the same calls as well, of commercial vehicles being parked on the streets for, generally speaking, it's over weekends, and it creates a problem for the neighbors.
But to, to clarify, just so that anyone who's watching, I know this probably won't be in the newspaper, since they're not here this evening, but the, now the definition will include 15 passenger plus one driver vans or buses that would also fall under the commercial vehicle classification, which currently basically just lists a weight of a vehicle, at least in the section that we're discussing this evening.
Thank you. If I can have the floor, I just had one, one follow-up question. I guess, you know, with that understanding, I wanted to make sure there was something in here to address that concern, but Mr. Scavelli, if we just add "for the purpose of loading or unloading," I guess I'm curious to know, how does that change, does that change, to me, it doesn't really change enforcement?
I can explain what I, what I foresee and what I thought the problem was. So the, the question that we had brought to our attention was, there was a commercial vehicle in particular, parking on a residential street, and this was a, a milk tanker truck, and it was essentially.
Nightly.
Semi-milk tanker truck, the same person that you talked to. And the, when looking at what we could tell them to do, the problem is, we have 24 hours in there with the idea of loading or unloading, mostly for recreational vehicles. I don't think we, we were foreseeing it to be used by commercial vehicles, because the commercial vehicles themselves have to be there, be in there the day, but then they have to leave, and so they could only park every other day in front of the house if they were gonna follow our law. The problem is, right now, they could, if they really wanted to push it, park every other night on that street, and we really couldn't do anything about it, because we could say, well, 24 hours, here's your ticket, but if they leave the next day, and then they come back the following day, and leave the next day, the way it was written, that would have been okay. And that's really an enforcement problem, and really just a silly rule that happened inadvertently, and I think that what we put in there will address it, because right now, if the person isn't loading or unloading, or doesn't look like they're loading or unloading, then they're probably could get a ticket in that situation. So I think this solves it, plus it takes commercial vehicles out of it completely. I think that the person parking their motor home, you know, before they head off to go camping, is less offensive to people than seeing a tanker truck or semi parked on the street. So I think this solves those problems, and we have gotten several complaints, and Ms. Warden has, Mr. Silvestri has, Ms. Knappich has. So based upon that, I think that these changes will, will effectuate the change that the citizens are looking for.
So the clause, "for the purpose of loading or unloading," applies strictly to recreational vehicles, because you've taken the commercial out anyway?
Correct.
Okay. But I guess as it stood, I, I can't understand how this commercial vehicle was allowed to remain there every night anyway.
It couldn't have remained there every night, but it could have remained there every other night.
Every other night. Have we enforced this, this, have we not enforced?
We have, but the problem is, is that if, if we did, then we could tell him to leave, but then if he, seriously, if he was there every other night?
I get that part, yeah.
I don't think we could have stopped.
I don't, I, I didn't hear any feedback that this person was being that diligent as to only be there every other night.
No, that's true, and we could go talk to them at this point, but.
Okay.
I have talked with the complainants, and I think he's satisfied with, with what's going on.
Okay, perfect, thank you. The only last question I had, I didn't want to forget. Is it necessary to have Section I under, or subheading I, I should say, under Section 351.98, the Parking Violations Bureau, it's actually page 16 of the, of the handout, is it necessary to leave the door open to fine the, the citizen $25 if they don't show up for a hearing?
Well, I believe, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that that is the, that's the default judgment section, correct? So they don't show up for the hearing, and so they, they're gonna end up with a default judgment, so it's no different than if you don't show up for any other civil kind of case. So if someone sues somebody, and then that person never answers, they can ask for a default judgment, and the court will answer a default judgment on behalf of the complainant. This basically works the same way.
Okay.
Now, if it's criminal, it doesn't work that way. They can put out a warrant, or they can suspend your driver's license, but there's no fine until you plead guilty or found guilty. In this case, we can enter the default judgment, and then send in collections if they don't pay.
Mr. Biden, I can defer to your procedural.
Well, we kind of went far afield from where we started with, we have a motion to amend on the floor by Ms. Warden, and, and I would be looking for a second to the amendment as she proposed.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Cavan. Any further discussion specifically on the amendment?
My other question was that, I was planning on leaving this on first reading anyway, and, and I, I have no problem voting on that amendment tonight and approving it, but I guess I'd really kind of like to see the administration go back and take these comments, fine tune them. We have two months to go over this then, and we can, you know.
When will we be out of tickets? Isn't that the driving force?
Free parking this summer.
Got another half.
I don't know, I'll have to defer to the chief.
They're, 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 listen, I asked this question a long time ago, so we are.
All right.
Other than on, on the amendment, did, how many, will there, we add any new employees?
No, absolutely. Please, of course, the same way as possible, there is, as, as usual, and myself and, and Mr. Gibbons, availability will handle any of the adherence to the.
Thank you.
Why don't we vote on the amendment, and then have it on, and then consider having its first reading with a direction to the Law Director to propose, or prepare a revised ordinance incorporating the amendment, so, that, assuming it passes, so, assuming that
That works for me.
With everyone's approval, then I would ask that Mr. Apollo take a road call vote on the amendment to include the change as proposed by Ms. Warden.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
And Silvestri?
Yes.
All right, that amendment has been approved, and I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Reynolds, and.
Yes, Mr. President, as amended, I'd proposed leaving this on first reading, and again, we'll look to see the re-edited version and study that this July and August.
Okay, yeah, everyone can take a harder look at that, and we'll revisit it in September, and I would probably advise that, you know, plan a vote on it the first meeting back after our vacation, so, because by then, if after two months, you need further time to review it, I'm not buying it.
And also, I mean, all joking aside, I mean, even though we're not gonna meet, I'm sure Mr. Scavelli, Mr. Gibbons, and myself, if people have concerns, or thoughts, or comments about it, we don't wait till September to talk about them, so.
Right.
Feel free to pass those along.
All right.
Ken, any questions, any questions anyone has, feel free to give myself or Kevin a call, and we're happy to, any concerns that you have, we're happy to talk to you.
Except just don't bug Mr. Gibbons when he's on vacation on Kelly's Island.
That, too.
All right, that brings us to miscellaneous portion. There's no one signed up from the public. public. So, we're now in the council's portion, and we'll start with Mr. Reynolds.
Again, thanks to Mr. Cavan for running a good meeting, or committee meeting beforehand, and for Chief Salley for all the work that went into that presentation. As the mayor said, we were very fortunate Monday, or a week ago Monday. But, I guess we, so thankful to the response we did have from our employees to deal with the damage. But, we don't have to look very far to see that, we have neighbors not too far away that did not come out so fortunate. And unfortunately for some of those people, they've got a long recovery coming. So, we need to keep them in our thoughts and prayers. And, you know, to the extent that we've got the ability to pitch in and help some of those people out, we should take advantage of that and do so.
Okay, Ms. Knappich?
I agree with Mr. Reynolds' comments. I wanted to add my congratulations to the Worcester Fire Department members who received the Star of Life Award for saving a 14-year-old's life in 2019. Unfortunately, they had to wait a few years because of COVID to get that award. But, it was just amazing, all of the departments that got together in this terrible snowstorm to help this young man to save his life. I think it's amazingly admirable. I also want to note that we got a letter, which I was impressed with. We, city council got a letter from a 10-year-old, almost 11-year-old girl, Addison Borman, and her stepfather, Samuel Troyer, who are concerned about the status and the condition of Worcester Skate Park. And they're concerned because they're, in their opinion, or at least in her letter, there seems to be some drug activity and things going on. And her stepfather said there was a used heroin needle in the scum on the far end of the pond by the park bench. This is the only skate park we have for kids. And when I go down to Shellon Park, I see that it gets used quite a bit. So, I would ask the administration to have, and Chief Fisher, to follow up on these things, and make sure, and the Parks and Rec Department, to make sure that these kids have a safe place to skateboard. It's the only place they're allowed to do it in town, and it should be safe for them. So, thank you. And kudos to a 10, almost 11-year-old skater girl who had the gumption to write to city council and impress.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes, I concur. Very, very nice statements from Mrs. Knappich. I would thank Chief Salley as well, for the incredible PowerPoint presentation and the tour of the building, highlighting the needs that we have for a very necessary function for the citizens of Worcester. And I would encourage everyone to look a little deeper at some of the material that was supplied. But other than that, I hope everyone has a wonderful summer.
Mr. Myers?
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke. I was going to mention what Ms. Knappich mentioned, and certainly I believe Kurt Denning and the public properties maintenance folks as well, as Chief Fisher and his team can look into those concerns. It is an asset to the city to have the skateboard park. I know we put it in a number of years ago, and it does get used, I think, probably daily, when the weather permits. So, we do definitely have a pretty good reputation of maintaining and taking care of our parks and our public assets in our community, pools and city parks. So, we certainly don't want a blemish, or anyone to think that it's not being maintained properly. So, we, I'm sure we'll look into that. And also, the EMS Star Award from 2019, the snowstorm, congratulations. And, you know, again, an example of both our firefighting, paramedics, as well as our police, that we have fine folks in our departments in our city. I'm proud of both those folks, those departments. Hawkins, Mag, Brockway, and Smith were the paramedics that were involved directly in that young man's saving of his life. Also, the road crews that got him where they needed to go. Our public properties folks that took the plows out ahead of him, our dispatch services who then relayed the need to the Ohio Department of Transportation to make sure we were able to once get out of the city limits to get to Akron. So, that's a lot of coordination. Somebody's on the ball up there, while they're making those things all happen. So, I appreciate all the coordination of our great team. Thank you.
Mr. Sanders?
Well, after these kind words and insightful words, I have nothing to add.
Okay, Mr. Silvestri?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also wanted to thank little Addison Borman for writing a handwritten letter to Worcester City Council. And whether or not that piece of debris was part of, you know, illegal drug use, or perhaps it was somebody with a medical condition such as diabetes, I would hope that our police department would continue to patrol that area. And either way, I appreciate her note and her concern, and I'm sure that we'll be looking into that in detail. Also, yes, thanks to the fire department for all the work that's gone into what I was able to hear of the tail end of the committee meeting tonight. And it sounded like Mr. Cavan ran a really good meeting. It's pretty exciting to see the 3D renderings of some of the plans that have already taken shape. And it'll be exciting to see what develops as things move forward. But, I do want to also commend our Director of Administration for, he's always sharpened his pencil on things like that. I know, would have been many, many years ago, all the way back when Mayor Brenneman was our representative on council, there were times that the Finance Committee had to kind of pick up the slack of the administration, I should say, in terms of sharpening their pencil and cutting some costs. But, that has not been the case. I think we have a very strong administration over these past few decades, and they're to be commended for kind of honing down the wish list into the need list, and making sure that, really, the taxpayers end up the beneficiaries of that good fiscal conservatism. So, thank you so much. That's all I have this evening.
Ms. Warden, we'll give you the last word.
Thank you. I'd just like to wish everyone a happy summer, and I have nothing to add to the comments tonight.
Well, enjoy your time off. And if we are called back for an emergency session, it means that the city is moving forward with certain projects, which means that we are progressing, and hope you won't begrudge having to come in for a special meeting. And in the meantime, hopefully you stay cool, because summer has started off with a nice little heat wave. And I hope everyone's safe and sound on the Fourth of July, and they enjoy celebrating our nation's independence. And I see Mr. Silvestri's move to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I agree with your adjourn.